Meeting of the Clean City Commission. Call to order, roll call please.
Commissioner Joslin? Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Commissioner cases excused. Commissioner Hollins?
Here.
Chairperson Oberg?
Here.
Vice chairperson Carpenter?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance, all rise please. Item one, approval of minutes. Consideration for minutes for approval.
I read the minutes and I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the commission shall fill out a request form in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The commission may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The commission may direct the staff to study the matter or request the matter replaced on future agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to address?
I am on Zoom.
Okay, we have Sengis Eric on Zoom and he'd like to approach, address.
Hi Commissioners, my name is Jangus Eric. I was, I had a cleanup, a Kingman community cleanup on May 31st along the frontage road that goes from Stockton Hill to Harrison Street. On May 31st, we met at 7:00 AM. About nine, excuse me, 12 people attended in total and we collected 14 bags of garbage along that walkway. It looked fantastic, really proud of everyone that showed up. And I have another one that's scheduled for August 25th. I kind of wanted to get your guys' blessing and at the same time, I am open to suggestions for location. It doesn't have to be today, but whenever you guys wanna, if you guys have somewhere in mind that needs some TLC or, you know, I'm not opposed to painting over graffiti or anything like that. I would love to get some guidance on where you guys would like some help. Thank you, Commissioners.
You're welcome and we appreciate that input.
Yeah, thank you.
And I would ask staff to get with Sengis and show him our calendar list. We have a calendar that we follow and see if we can't get some of his cleanups on our calendar to discuss it the next meeting. Old business, event calendar. Updated the Clean City Commission calendar events, discussion of possible action. Kealan?
Good evening Chair, Vice Chair, members of the commission. Appreciate the opportunity to be here with you guys this evening. This item is a regular meeting agenda item so that any events that may arise can be scheduled to be discussed and participation decided upon. Staff has asked that the commission look for events and activities that would benefit the Clean, benefit from Clean City Commission participation. Any additional events that the commissioners know of and which they think could benefit from Clean City Commission participation can be discussed at this time. Vice Chairperson Carpenter requested that staff work to create information, posters to reduce the number of handouts provided to the public. He said if the public is interested in the Clean City Commission programs based on the poster and on information given to them by commissioners, they can get, they can, excuse me, they can be given applications and additional documents. And then I think in your guys' packet you have a copy of the current or the updated event calendar. Might be sparsely populated at the moment, but of course we had the first Friday on the 5th and then of course tonight's meeting and then on September 14th, there's the day of carrying and October 18th is our next regularly scheduled meeting as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
We did a talk about the poster at our agenda meeting and how's that coming? Okay, but we didn't bring it, we decided not to bring it to the commission, just go ahead and get the poster made. We have a budget set for things like that and I told them to go ahead and get it ready to go. So staff's working on that.
To promote the programs?
To promote the programs.
Okay, and there'll be a poster per program?
Yeah.
That kind of a deal, yeah?
And then just hand out business cards to anybody that's, and tell them where to get
all the information?
Yeah, and if I, if I may, Vice Chair, I think once we get a draft copy completed, then of course we'll, you know, send it to you guys to look over, review.
Great, yeah.
Is there anything that anybody else wanted to add to the current event calendar?
Sengis cleanup. We could add that.
Sorry, that was August 25th?
Yeah.
And Kealan, I have to ask several meetings, maybe we can get some, contact me or maybe Annie can touch base on that while she's here tonight, why we can't get these cleanups on the city, on the city event calendar. I look at that calendar every Thursday to see what's going on over the weekend and I never see any cleanups on there, even Sengis cleanup was not on there. Any other comments on event calendar? Moving on to B, adopt a block program. I'm gonna turn it over to Randy here to just give us a quick update on the adopt a block program.
Were you gonna do an adopt a block update? Okay, so yeah, we're continuing to promote mainly first Fridays and had a couple owned, that owned a, they own a business, I gave them some paperwork, pest control business and they, they seemed interested in other programs that we're promoting, gave an application to possibly get another person on our committee because we have one open seat and our commission rather. And so yeah, we're still plugging away with promoting and the adopt a block, our church is scheduled to do another one in the fall and then we're gonna re-sign, we're gonna sign up again for another couple years hopefully. And yeah, we'll just continue to plug away and get more and more people interested. And that's a part of the streamlining idea of streamlining the promotions, really get it moving.
And if I can just underscore that real quick, on May 6th, 2024, Nucor held a cleanup of their adopt a block area, they indicated that they picked up 10 bags of trash.
Thank you, Nucor. Awesome.
Excellent. Okay, moving on, new business, item number four, meeting date, time and frequency. We had touched base on this before and it's, it gets brought up often if we want to continue meeting on a quarterly basis or if we want to meet on a monthly, but I think Annie's gonna.
Yeah, thank you Chair Oberg. Commissioners, just to give you a little background on this agenda item, the city council had a work session where they discussed all of the boards and commissions and one of the items that came out of that was there were some commissions that had expressed maybe wanting to meet more frequently, maybe wanting to change their day, maybe change their meeting time. So council requested that we bring it back to all commissions and give it as a discussion option, whether or not there are any changes requested or not, they wanted to give every commission the opportunity to consider that. Right now, your commission meets quarterly. Historically, in the past, before we went to quarterly, you guys did meet monthly. I believe when we pulled the data, you met, I think it was eight out of 12 meetings when you were monthly for a year, just to give you some background on your meeting frequency. There is several different options you can go with. Some commissions have requested to possibly go every other month. Some commissions are fine staying quarterly. We do have some commissions that, you know, planning and zoning and MUC that have to meet monthly, but the council wanted to give that to you guys. They did request that you provide through a formal action at your meeting, your top three requests as far as daytime frequency so that we can take that, put it all together, look at the current meeting calendar, make sure that there's no overlaps or conflicts and then they will wrap that all up in their code update. They're doing an update of the entire boards and commissions code section for our city code.
So do you suggest maybe in the, within the next two weeks, each individual commissioner would send to Donna what they feel and then we can compile them and see what?
So what the commissions have been doing so far, I think you're my fifth commission that we've had this item, they're just having the discussion and coming to some consensus during the meeting and then I just, I'll take some notes and then whatever, if there is more than one suggestion that you'd like to send forward, maybe you'd prefer this, this would be an alternate and that kind of thing, then you would just take an action with a motion on that and then we could move forward with that unless you wanted additional time for consideration, but it can't be just like a poll where we get the data. It does need to be a full consensus of the commission on what you want to propose to the council.
Are we prepared this evening to discuss that and make a motion or do we want to think about it and discuss it at the next meeting?
Well, Mike's, Mike's not here, but, oh, Mike's not here, but I mean, we can still discuss it if you wanted to, get our opinions on it and then I'm open for it.
I see no reason to delay making a decision myself. Tonight's good as any. I prefer, personally, I prefer monthly, but, and this day and time is fine, I'm fairly flexible, so I just think quarterly is not often enough to carry on a program and now we're finally getting some going, so it'd be nice to be able to discuss them and, and actually do more planning on a more regular basis. That's my opinion.
My opinion would be I'd compromise and go every two months. Instead of quarterly and every month, I think every month's a lot. Plus it takes up more staff, money, all that kind of stuff, right? Time, right, to have these meetings, so I'd compromise with every two months would be good.
And we did have a discussion six months ago or so and, and we actually had a motion and we did vote to keep it quarterly. We discussed, are we going to get that much more accomplished meeting on a monthly basis? You know, there's, there's a lot of communication. I think Kealan and Donna really work hard at communicating with us what's going on in between the quarterly meetings. So we all gave it some thought and we, we voted to keep it quarterly with the thought that we're not going to accomplish anything more by having meetings on a monthly or every other month basis. My thought would still be to keep it quarterly, I think. I feel, I feel like quarterly would be.
Mr. Chairman, through the chairs, for those people that don't know that are watching, Annie, will you please tell them your name and your last name and your title for those people who are not familiar with you?
Yes, I apologize for that. Annie Meredith, I'm the city clerk for the city of Kingman.
Thank you. I concur with quarterly. We could possibly do, when we do cleanups, we can get together and talk ahead of time, but I, I do like the idea of quarterly. We do have to worry about the, for the open laws, but we can discuss, not discuss business, but plans.
Yes, we can plan cleanups and that sort of stuff in between our quarterly meeting. We just can't have an agenda item where we have to make a motion, well, you know that, yeah.
Chair Oberg, if I, if I can add, one of the things that was also considered and could potentially be coming forth in the code rewrite is allowing the commissions, should you want to stay quarterly, to call an extra or special meeting as needed if you had additional business that needed to be addressed or a decision that needed to be made by your commission as a whole before your next meeting.
And we did discuss that once before and we were told we could not do that, so now you're saying we can.
So it will have to, it'll have to be a part of the code update. So right now, the code doesn't allow for that for Clean City Commission, but that could be, you know, if you, if your decision was we're, we want to stay quarterly or we want to go every other month, but we want the ability to call a meet, a special meeting should we need one, that can be part of your recommendation or your request.
That's excellent, yes. Your thoughts?
I'm pretty flexible with whatever, almost I can see every other month, something like that, or if we're doing quarterly, then it's called special meeting.
Yeah, and I don't mind going quarterly if we can have a special meeting every once in a while, we don't need them all the time, but in between the quarterly. I make a motion that we continue to have our meetings on a quarterly basis.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
You didn't ask for the names.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I vote, I vote nay.
Nay, I thought.
Thank you.
Okay, neighborhood cleanups. We've been discussing, Eddie has actually been discussing how to, a program for neighborhood cleanups and I asked him to come and give us a presentation on it, how it works and all the details on it.
Commissioner Members, my name is Eddie Tabia, I'm the solidway superintendent with the city. We were approached by council this budget year to see if we could offer four cleanups a year to help clean up our city neighborhoods. So what we came up with is that we want to be able to have four neighborhood cleanups. We're hoping you as a commission can decide where those neighborhoods would be. Each one of those neighborhoods would get up to 175 vouchers that you all will hand out to them and let them know that they could have a free cleanup. That'll be starting July of 2024 to June of 2025. So again, like I said, the commission will distribute the, the vouchers, the things that we will accept will be tree limbs, furniture limbs, bag trash, carpet appliances, anything that has a compressor in it, like an AC unit or a, let's see, a refrigerator, that has to be professionally removed. So once it's been professionally removed, we would pick that up as well. All these things would have to be bagged and tied. That voucher is only good for up to five cubic yards, so people will ask, what is five cubic yards? Five cubic yards is equivalent to, if you had a standard pickup at home, whatever your brand is, GMC, Ford, it's got an eight foot bed, if you fill that eight foot bed up all the way to the top of the cab, that's five cubic yards, so they will get away with that. So we'd be more than happy to do that. The things we do not accept obviously is construction debris, large quantities of it. I got roofing materials, but that's roofing, like as in roofing, so sorry about that spell, spelling there, but any kind of large vehicle parts, you know, vehicles are so distributed with motor vehicle, you know, stamps and stuff like that. We can't take anything that has, anything that's been previously licensed. We don't take loose trash. We know from previous cleanups and stuff, people will come with, you know, a trailer or truckload and they've just piled it all in there, you know, we need it to be contained in some way. We are asking that customer to place everything out at the curb, so they will place it out at the curb. We will, when you all go and you hand it out, let's say we pick a neighborhood, so say we pick downtown in the month of September, you know, you all go out, you guys will hand out these vouchers, you'll have a form in there that'll tell, give a voucher number and this will go to 801 Topeka Street, so we'll know when they call in. When those people call in, we will give them a window time of letting them know, have this out on this particular day. It's either gonna probably at this particular point be a Wednesday or Thursday, we will work with them to have that out. We really hope that we will have it picked up within 48 hours, the time that we tell them to have it out. Let me see, and again, I think this is just going to be a lot easier, you know? In the past, if we had a drop location somewhere, we had a lot of people that couldn't bring their items there, so this is going to help facilitate some of those retired people or people that can't get it from point A to point B. So this is what's going to work best with us, it's going to be safer, we know what we're up against, we know that, you know, once we get there, we'll know that there's no hazardous material, we can communicate with that customer. And so we're going to ask them to place everything out the night before or by 6:00 AM their day of their pickup. And then when they call in, we have a phone number here, 928-692-3115. That'll be on a flyer, I believe in your packet, there's a copy of the flyer, so you'll give them that flyer, you'll give them that voucher and then they can call us, they will talk with Donna and our staff to be able to facilitate the date to have that picked up. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, I'll apologize in advance, I'm kind of hard of hearing, but I'll do my best.
Do we pick and choose the homeowner? Do we walk the neighborhood, pick and choose, or do we?
Well, I think maybe that would be open for discussion. I think, you know, we can discuss that internally, you know, between now and the next meeting, that's why we kind of pushed it out till Septem, not the next meeting, but we pushed it out till September, so we have the rest of July and all of August to be able to find a date, find a neighborhood and then the criteria will basically be up to you. I think, you know, there's only going to be 175 people that will be blessed with this particular neighborhood. We'll do four cleanups a year, so what we're hoping is through communication again and maybe you could vote to say, hey, you know, Councilman Oberg will be the one, you know, through communicating to be able to determine when those other months would be in those other neighborhoods. So the question will come up with, well, we only get four neighborhoods, but we're hoping then the following budget year, we'll be able to hit four different neighborhoods. So, but I guess just from previous experience and stuff, I would just say if you concentrate on the blight areas, you know, the things that, you know, maybe working with code enforcement or something of that, somebody that's got, you know, a real problem that has, you know, they can benefit from, you know, five cubic yards worth of trash picked up.
Mr. Chairman.
I, I think that would be who we'd want to do because when you walk or drive through the neighborhood and they got a pile of trash out there, obviously they could probably use some help, so we wouldn't want to just go out there and give it to somebody or every third house or something like that. Should be obvious that they could use the firm, my.
Sure. And maybe what we could do is add to that flyer as well is maybe put the regular rate, the regular rate is 2575 for this fiscal year, I believe. There probably would be a rate increase sometime in February, but 2575 is the normal rate, so maybe when you're going house to house, you could just, you know, maybe there's going to be some people that, you know, will choose, no, I don't want that, save it for somebody else that would need it and then you, you know, they could still call that number and just call it in, in normal pickups, but.
2570?
2575 is the normal rate.
For a bulk, for a bulk pickup?
Bulk pickup, five cubic yards.
Batteries?
Pardon? No batteries? Batteries? No, nothing hazardous. No chemicals, no pesticides, nothing hazardous. It'll be the same bylaws that we normally do with our regular bulk pickup or more importantly, what you can put into your regular 90 gallon trash can.
I think this is a much better system than putting a dumpster out there and hoping they don't throw stuff in there that they're not supposed to. So I think this will be easier to manage.
Facilitate, yeah, it's a safer and a better option for everybody involved.
We'll have this flyer to give them too? Cause it's listed, everything's listed on it.
A draft of the flyer that's there, if any of you think that there should be something else added, we can work with Chairman Oberg and we'll be able to add that to it. Like I said, I just now thought about maybe putting the regular price in there, but again, you know, I think our main goal out of today's meeting is maybe pick a neighborhood, I know that was in your packet to say, hey, think about what neighborhoods we could go to give staff some direction come September that we could pick the month of September for everybody to go by.
That's a good flyer.
We did get an email from one of the commissioners regarding a neighborhood.
Okay, perfect.
Is it okay, Donna, I read it out? Okay, so as discussion, it's the historic Kingman, it says, "To include Oak Street north of Turquoise Street and Med Caff Road next to I-40 east to the 10th, to 10th Street." Does that make sense? I drove some of that today and it does look like an area that, you know, we could walk through and probably hand out.
So when you drove that, is there actual individual resident addresses that we could pick from?
Yes.
Okay, and then, yeah, that would be perfect.
So that's one location. Did anybody?
No, but I do have a question. My neighbor has lots and lots of cactus sitting out waiting for someone to pick up. They can't put it in bags. What do you do in the case of a cactus that will tear up, shred a bag?
And what were they, I'm sorry?
They have, they've got it sitting out waiting for the garbage man now for their big dump day, that you, the 2575, but they don't know how to put the cactus into garbage bags.
Oh, no, so tree limbs would be a good example. If, on our website, basically tree limbs have to be cut within six foot length so they can go in the back of the trash, you know, they don't need to be tied up or bundled, but again, some sort of nice arrangement that we could use a skid loader Bobcat with grapplers to grab it and go. So each, every Wednesday, we do a bulk pickup, a normal bulk pickup, we have between 40 and 50 work orders a week and so we're going to treat it just like that. So if we get to a property that, you know, there's just nothing we could do that, we will talk with that homeowner, let them know what needs to be changed and we could give them another date and let them know when we get back, once they've fixed that. But again, there'll be a number on there for any information if they wanted to call and ask those.
Thank you, that's great information.
Good.
Are we doing suggestions on neighborhoods now?
Yes, or at least give me one.
Yes.
I would suggest the neighborhood that everybody's been having to drive through due to the, the connection to airway, all that construction's going on.
Calumet or whatever it is.
Yeah, maybe, maybe start there because they've been through a lot with extra traffic going to the neighborhood and stuff, you know? Offer that to them, for sure.
Yeah, so again, I'll leave that up to y'all, how to decide that.
And that would be a nice neighborhood to go through, but I think we need to do it. it after the construction's completed. And Sean can probably head live on when they think that'll be completed.
So, yeah, my suggestion, as you're driving around and you're seeing things, start writing these down, because, again, we don't have to decide all four today, but we can kind of, you know, figure that out. And then, for the next fiscal year, let us know, you know, maybe instead of four, you know, we'll be blessed to do six, just depending on how the budget goes.
Donna, if you don't mind, I'll get hold of Mike. Because I drove around and I was kind of looking at his brief outline. And I'll get exact areas. Maybe he and I can even go drive around in those areas. I'll get them to you. And then, you can do a blanket email to all the commissioners.
I think that you need to decide this by vote. So, if it's possible to do it at this meeting, that would be good.
This area seemed like a good area. I mean, we could take a vote on it today, and then we'll just consolidate this area.
I got a question or a comment. So, we're doing one hundred and seventy-five vouchers per neighborhood. What if there's only fifty that we can hand out? Is, can we, should we expand, say, more than one neighborhood to get closer to the one hundred and seventy-five? And, you know, within that vicinity, we want to do?
I guess, you know, maybe this is an attorney question, but I guess I would only be concerned because you voted for that particular area. But, in the event, say, you only had seventy-five vouchers that handed out, that neighborhood looked pretty good. So, I can get back with my staff, and I'm going to speak out of turn here, but I don't see why we couldn't take that additional there, add it to the remaining three, so we're not overwhelming ourselves on one particular month. But, yeah, I mean, the money is, the money is there, so we might as well spend it.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to do, one, one of, you know.
Right.
Thank you.
Just, I'm a process person. So, a recommendation that I would bring forward is, if you all have an area that you're looking at, you could provide that to staff. They could compile it, bring it back to the commission, and then you would have everybody's ideas. You could rank them in priority order and approve that order. And then, if you finish this area and you have vouchers left over, you can move down the line. And that would probably fix your discussion issue.
Mr. Chairman, being as we only have, we have four in the fiscal year, starting in September to finish, correct? Till the end of December? Or is it next, till next June?
We go by fiscal year.
Fiscal year. That's what I'm asking. Okay. Our next meeting, we're looking at September, but our next meeting is not until October.
Right. So, I guess that's why we're hoping maybe to make a decision for the first one, and then you all can compile a lot to get... Annie, am I wrong? Did I introduce Annie, Clerks slash Solid Waste Department? Yeah. So, anyway, that's...
And we're going to treat it like a cleanup. So, even though we're not having a meeting until then, Donna will send emails out to everyone. We're having a cleanup on such and such day. But, we'll be calling this the neighborhood. And we'll all meet at that neighborhood and pick a street and go down individual streets, the way I see it, and, and pick and choose a house. If Sean has any one that his code enforcement officers would like us to...
Sure.
I think we should include Sean on, Sean in that, so that if his code enforcement officers have an address that they want us to go talk to, we'll bring them a voucher also.
And just to be clear, the homeowner does the work, brings it up, brings it up to the curb.
Absolutely. Just like a regular bulk pickup. It's got to be out of the curb by this particular time when we go through.
Yes.
So, I'm going to read this one more time. That would be the neighborhood to include Oak Street and north to Turquoise. And then, he put on there, Med Caff Road next to I-40 east to the Tenth. I found that area. I didn't find the neighborhood per se, but that's the area that one of the commissioners had said would be a good area to...
Does it sound like most of it is from First Street, I guess we would call West, from Beale Street to the mountain?
That's...
So, maybe we just say that particular area is what we're going to do.
That's what I drove, actually, today, yeah. From Beale Street almost to the, to the freeway, basically, up to the bottom base of that mountain, and through all the little neighborhoods. And there looked like there could be...
Could there be one hundred and seventy-five?
No, absolutely, absolutely not.
Okay, then maybe we, the suggestion, maybe we extend it from, you know, from Carl's Jr., whatever that road is, and then maybe go further to Tenth Street, and then everything, you know, that side of Andy Devine. And again, these are residential properties only, because we don't currently do commercial bulk pickup, residence only.
I think we should extend this area like you just said.
Yeah. I think a larger area would be better than maybe having, you know, not enough, you know, people to, for the first month, so...
And I personally feel like we should leave it up to Eddie to pick the grid. You know, it's basically a grid. You can pick the grid. This is the area, I guess, we could all probably approve tonight. And then, you just let us know what, what's grid.
You could count houses on, off of Google Earth. Just zoom in and count some houses, pick an area.
Kealan, you have anything to add?
I think, you know, at this point, if we can put that in the form of a, of a motion, then to Vice Chair Carpenter's point, we do have a GIS system that allows us to, very similar to Google Earth, but a little more intuitive, that we could certainly, you know, pick out the grid as, as Chairperson Oberg indicated, and go from there.
I make a motion that we, that we pick this area downtown Beale Street and allow Eddie or Kealan to pick the grid in the area.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Number five reports. Andy's here to talk to us about annual and open meeting, open meeting law training.
Good evening, Chair Oberg Commissioners. Annie Meredith, City Clerk, and I am here to deliver your annual open meeting law training. This is something we provide every year for the commissions. Usually, myself or somebody from the city attorney's office will, will come and do this. So, I'm going to go through it. If you have any questions, please stop me, please ask. If not, then I will just go through, and you can always ask some questions at the end if you have some. So, what is open meeting law? It's the public policy of the state that meetings of public bodies be conducted openly, and that notices and agendas be provided for such meetings which contain such information as reasonably necessary to inform the public of the matters to be discussed or decided. All meetings of a public body shall be meeting, shall be public meetings, and anyone desiring to attend should be permitted, and they should be able to listen to the deliberations and proceedings. Basically, the, all of our boards, commissions, city council meetings are public business and have to be conducted in the public. Why does it matter? It protects the public and preserves their right to participate in local government. It protects the public officials, and it means the integrity of our government, and it helps to better inform our citizens and build trust between us and them. Who must comply with open meeting law? Each one of you. And that is you as a commission, but that is also you as an individual. So, if an open meeting law violation was to be called on somebody, that would be a, could be a personal violation that you would be responsible for. And then, the public body is just defined as any boards, commissions of the state or political subdivision, all standing special or advisory committees or subcommittees appointed by the public body. You guys, as a commission, don't have subcommittees. This includes our quasi-judicial bodies, like Board of Adjustments and Board of Appeals. It tells you what subcommittees are, but again, our commissions are not allowed in our code to have a subcommittee. What constitutes a meeting? It's the gathering in person or through technological devices of a quorum of members of a public body at which you discuss, propose, or take any type of action, including any deliberations by a quorum with respect to that action. The quorum is defined as a majority of the members of a board or commission. So, you are a seven-member commission. That means any time that four or more of you are together, then you are considered a meeting. And vacant positions, should you have any, do not reduce your quorum requirement. What constitutes a meeting? So, in today's technological day and age, this is definitely not an exhaustive list, but it gives you some of the things that you might not have thought about that could potentially cause an open meeting law violation. For certain, any time that an email is sent to the commission, you want to make sure that you are not replying all when you reply back. But, if somebody posts something on social media and one of you comments, and then another one of you comments, and then another one of you comments, as soon as you hit four, that's an open meeting law violation. Similar with any type of group text messaging, you wouldn't want, you'd want to be sure that you didn't do any of that. Anything on the website, blogs, that kind of thing. We just always recommend that if you have something to share with your fellow commissioners, that you provide that to staff, and then staff can send it out to everybody, and that would not be a violation. Yes, sir?
I've texted the commission members, if I'm going to go, be at First Friday or something, I do a group text out, say, hey, I'm going to be there. Is that violation?
So, you should never send a message in any format to all of the commission. And you also don't want to, and it's probably the next slide, send it, the same message to four different commissioners, because then that's splintering a quorum. And even though the integrity is there and you're not meaning to do any type of violating, it's more so the, the appearance of communications amongst yourselves outside of an open meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. So, if you guys are looking to see who's going to be able to attend an event, maybe everybody, you just have a point person for that event. And it's probably best that it be one of your staff liaisons, and then they can send out something to all of the commissioners, saying, these people have confirmed that they'll be in attendance. Yeah.
Or should we have an, an agenda for information only, that there may be, and we don't, you never know how many's going to show up, but could it be that?
So, we do is, we, what we call courtesy postings. So, like, for First Fridays or cleanups or stuff like that, we have a courtesy posting that says, a quorum of a commission may be present, but no official business is going to be taken, and that's okay. And even generally, you know, when you guys are, we're a small community. So, when you're out in the community and you run into each other, and maybe two of you are having lunch, and then two more are having lunch, and you decide to share a table, you know, it's just best that you don't discuss any Clean City Commission stuff, that because it could, if it's potentially going to come back to your commission for a decision, then that would be an open meeting law violation. But, you know, that doesn't stop you all from being able to attend events, attend different things, and participate in those, just not discussing. And if there is something that someone says, hey, I was thinking about this, you can just say, let's shoot it over to staff and have them put it on our next agenda. That's the safest bet.
Question. So, what Randy does is, the First Fridays, he'll send out a text message to everyone, hey, just a reminder, First Friday, I'll be there.
Join me if you want.
Is, is, yeah, join me if I want. Now, is the violation, join me if I want? Because he starts getting, he starts getting text messages back, I won't be there, I will be there. So, what's the violation? Him sending out the reminder, or other commissioners texting him back?
So, it's whenever you are communicating in any fashion with a quorum of your membership. So, by sending a message, and I'm not saying that that is specifically a violation, right? That would be up to an attorney, the attorney general is who open meeting law violation complaints go through. We do give this training because we try to prevent anybody forever, you know, trying to, or say that we intentionally violated open meeting law. I obviously know that that is not your intent, but it is whenever there is a concentrated communication with four or more of your membership. So, if you need to, if you guys want cleanup reminders or First Friday event reminders sent out, it's always best to have the staff do that. Yeah. Good questions. Thank you. This, we kind of covered a little bit, splintering a quorum. So, if you guys have an item that you're discussing, and, you know, you talk to one person about it, and you guys chat, and then you two leave that, and you talk to two other people, that's splintering a quorum, and constitutes an open meeting law violation. Informing the public, we are required by statute to inform the public of our meeting and post a full and complete agenda no later than twenty-four hours before a meeting. I believe we try to get them out, you know, the week before and give everybody a time to look at the materials. But, by law, we have to do it no, or sooner than twenty-four hours before a meeting. If a meeting is not posted and noticed in our three posting locations in that timeframe, then the meeting has to be canceled. Our agendas are required to have the date, time, and location of the meeting, a list of specific things that are going to be discussed. And then, each agenda item should have a little summary that just gives the public a basic understanding of what's going to be discussed. It doesn't need to be the full presentation or a full detailed summary. It just needs to say, similar to like how your agenda say, you're going to receive an update about neighborhood cleanup projects, or you're going to receive open meeting law training. They do all have access. The entire agenda packet, including the larger summaries, are available to the public through our website as well. And then, any matters, other matters to be discussed have to be, in a reasonable way, related to something specifically on the agenda. If it is not on the agenda, don't discuss it. And one of the things that we're going to talk about later in this, this meeting agenda, is the opportunity to bring forth future agenda reports and updates. So, that could potentially help with making sure that we're not trying to, you know, squeeze in a discussion about something that we haven't properly agendized. Any action that is taken on something that has not been properly agendized is null and void, and is an open meeting law violation. Call to the public, call to the public is an item that we put on all of our board, commission, and council agendas. It is not a required item, but we do allow it as part of that public participation and having the community engagement. But, we are able to impose a time limit. So, for city council meetings, we allow each public comment speaker three minutes, and then we can move on to whoever is next in line.
Annie, there's been questions on the calls to public, whether I have to read the whole entire item, or if I can just do a call to public, see if anybody wants to...
So, when you're presenting the agenda items, thank you for that question, Chair Oberg, you do want to read the entire description that's been provided, which is another reason we try to make our agenda item descriptions brief, so that you're not reading the full summary of the item. And I can look at yours and see if there is something that can be cut back. I think it's just the standard call to the public. And the reason that that one specifically is so important is because it helps communicate them, to them, what the expectation is. Like, it's a one-way information delivery. There's not an option for discussion. There's not an option for going back and forth. And we really want to make sure that they understand that their comments will be received and heard, and that the commission can direct staff to follow up. The commission could request it be placed on a future agenda, any of those types of things. But, you can't actually have a conversation with the person. So, that's why we kind of have a bigger blurb with that one. We just covered this. This is what you can do during call to the public. You can, the one thing you can do is respond to criticism. So, if somebody comes up and they are directly firing not-nice things at you... So if somebody comes up and they are directly firing not-nice things at you as a whole or as an individual, you do have the opportunity at the end of call to the public to address that. Again, it's not a conversation back and forth with them. It's just you speaking to that item. You can have the staff review it. You can ask it be placed on a future agenda. Or you can just say thank you and move on to the next person. You don't have to do anything with it. You can just accept it as information. And then again, it's another one of those, if it's not on the agenda, then it's not permitted. It is a standing item on our agenda. So if that was ever something that the commissions did not want to allow, then they would need to agendize removing it and make that a official action. The public can attend our meetings. They can listen. They can tape record. They can video. They don't have a right to speak unless it's during that call to the public time and they have requested to do so. And they don't have the right to be disruptive. So anybody that knowingly violates open meeting law can have a penalty imposed on them. It goes through the court process. Like I said, open meeting violations are filed with the Attorney General's office. If, if they get one for the City of Kingman that they find is, has any merit to it, then they forward that to the City Attorney's Office, who would then notify anybody that was a participant in that. Anybody that does that, then you could potentially be removed from your, your role as a volunteer on our commission, and you could potentially have to pay whatever legal expenses are associated with that. And then, like I mentioned before, any action you take that was deemed to have an open meeting, open meeting law violation would be undone. That, it would be null. Conflict of interest. Don't see this a lot with Clean City, but it's still important that you guys know because we, again, we are a small community. So if you have an item that's coming before your commission that you could have personal gain or benefit from, then it's best that you just declare a conflict of interest. Donna has forms that you can fill out, and it doesn't have to be a big, complex thing. It can just be, I'm abstaining from discussion and voting on this matter. And it, it applies to you as a public officer or an appointed commissioner, but it also applies to if it's going to directly benefit any of your immediate family members as well. So if you have a conflict, you would generally know ahead of time because you see the posted agenda. You could just let staff know that you weren't going to participate in discussion and action on that item. And then this just says that, and this does apply to you as commissioners, if you have a business and want to participate in one of the City of Kingman's open, public bidding processes, anything, whether it hit our threshold for requiring a public open bid or not, would automatically trigger that. So if you own a landscaping business and we're going out to find new landscapers for the City of Kingman, and even though it's below our $50,000 threshold for having to go to a formal bid process, because you serve on a board or commission, that would automatically trigger us to need to do that. So that's important for you to know. Remote interests. That is if your cousin's, brother's, uncle's neighbor could potentially benefit from this. You know that person, but it doesn't, it is not bringing you any gain. So that's, that we would not consider a conflict of interest. These are the statutes that speak to open meeting law and conflicts of interest. Again, if you ever have any questions, you're more than welcome to contact my office or contact City Attorney Carl Cooper's office, and we are happy to follow up on that with you. With that, are there any questions before I go to the next one? All right, then we will just go into that. This one's super exciting. This is parliamentary procedures. And so with parliamentary procedures, we do have the option to do a modified or tailored for the City of Kingman parliamentary procedures. So we don't necessarily have to do the formal Roberts Rules of Orders. So the city has adopted how they do parliamentary procedure. Again, if you have any questions, just let me know. So what is parliamentary procedure? It's a set of rules for conduct at meetings. It allows everybody to be heard, and it helps to make decisions without confusion. Why is it important? Because it is a time-tested method of conducting business at meetings and public gatherings. And again, it can be adapted to fit the needs of any organizations. And it's important that everybody knows the basic rules and the basic flow of how a meeting goes. This is our typical meeting order. I did not update this with our most recent thing, which is a request for future reports or updates. But we have call to order, roll call, pledge of allegiance, approval of our minutes, any awards or recognition you want to do, the call to the public, any old business, which is business that was brought before you, before, and then needs to be brought back. So for instance, this evening, you talked about identifying areas for cleanup. If that comes back with additional areas, that would move from new business to old business because it's a continued discussion of a previous matter. Any new business, any reports by staff, announcements by the commission or the staff, and then adjournment, you have a question? Yes, ma'am?
Yes. We, we follow Roberts Rules. And according to Roberts Rules, it's no longer acceptable to do old business. It's called unfinished business. And it's the 11th edition, and I brought it to the city, and you said it couldn't be changed because somebody else was doing our agenda. It needs to be looked at. We no longer follow it in Roberts Rules.
So my understanding, and I did, Chair, Commissioner Wilson, share your information with our city attorney, and he said that we are okay with having it as old business. So I would for sure defer to the city attorney on that for, if you have additional questions, okay? But I did share your comments and concerns with him. Yes, uh-huh. So motions. This kind of explains what the motions are. There are different types of motions. You mainly see that main motion, which is the initial proposal from a member of your commission on an item. But there can also be subsidiary motions that change that motion. You have the ability to amend a motion if so desired. You also have the ability to withdraw a motion if you would like to do that as well. The way that a motion goes, and it really helps it just move so smoothly, is somebody makes a motion, somebody can second a motion if they choose to. There is a discussion opportunity, and then the commission takes a vote. The way motions are presented is you want to make sure that you obtain the floor. So you would, in this instance, Chair Oberg, I'd like to make a motion. You would acknowledge that person. They would make their motion. Once you make, when you're making your motion, you want to make sure it's nice and clear, that everybody understands, especially your recording secretary, who is, you know, capturing it for the permanent record, what exactly that action is that you're wanting to take. And then you wait for someone to make a second. If there isn't a second, then that motion just dies. There is the opportunity for somebody else to make a new motion. But you want to be careful that you're not just making motions until something catches per se, that you want to make sure that there really is a substantial interest of your commission. The chairperson can call for the second, or somebody can just say, I second that. Again, the chairman will say, I, we have a motion to approve such and such and a second. Is there any discussion? Give the opportunity for anybody to have additional comments or feedback on that. And then all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay. And then you want to, for the record, make sure you say motion carried or motion failed. That way, we know what that official action was, and then there's no guessing. You do have the option, like I said before, to expand on your motion before the vote is taken if the person that gave the motion chooses to do so. You can do voting by a number of different ways. Generally, we just say aye or nay. Sometimes when there are items that come before the council or a commission that there might be a little bit more of a split favor on, sometimes the chairperson will call for a roll call vote. So it's very clear who the ayes are and who the nays are. And then there's also the option to raise your hand, but it's always easier if you do that audible one so that we can record that accurately. There are other motions besides the motion to approve or the motion to deny. There is an option for a motion to table. So this can be used when somebody is wanting to have an item go away. But it's also an item if you need staff to bring additional information or you need some more research, or you want to do more research. You can always say, I want to make a motion to table this item till our meeting on this date, and then it comes back as old business. And then you could always do a motion to postpone indefinitely, which is basically that item is going away. So parliamentary procedure, again, is the best way to get things done. It allows for motions that are in order. It allows, make sure that the members are obtaining the floor properly. Nobody's speaking over each other. You want to make sure everything's nice and clear. You are, most importantly, being courteous, right? Giving each other the option. We have a very diverse mix of people on our boards and commissions, and that is so that we get a, a really good feedback on the items that we're having discussed. And with that, I will answer any additional questions you may have.
Can you elaborate on the special meeting? If we have a special meeting in between and it's over at Public Works? How, can we make motions there? Is it just agenda meetings?
Yep. So a special meeting is an actionable meeting. So you can have actions, items on that. And that would be the whole purpose of calling it is because there's something that you need to make a decision on. And if you guys need to call a special meeting, then you would just want to, as the chairperson, communicate that. Or if you and staff are working on something and setting maybe a future agenda in that meeting, and you're like, you know what, this needs to be heard sooner, or staff has received feedback from several commissioners that we need to meet to discuss something before our next meeting, then they can for sure call that meeting. The only meeting that doesn't allow for action would be a work session. So if you guys wanted to hold a work session, maybe like with the community, to solicit feedback on cleanups or abatements or anything like that, that you wouldn't be able to take formal action on. You could just receive information at. But special and regular meetings, you can, yes.
And the other question I had was, I do a lot of, a lot of work with staff in between our meetings. And sometimes we like to get that information out to the commissioners, let them know where we're at, what we're doing. How, is that something Donna can put out as a?
Yep. Staff can always share reports or updates via email outside of meetings. Yeah, that does not have to be in a meeting. And if there's something that's going to be brought forth for discussion and you guys have asked that some materials be provided ahead of time, that can also be sent out. Again, if it's something that's going to be discussed on an agenda, you want to make sure that you have that backup, that data, that report, that presentation also on your publicly posted agenda. But staff can most certainly email the commission as a whole. Again, it's just the commissioners emailing each other that, that kind of gets you into that sticky spot. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, item number B, Neighborhood Services Update. Sean was going to come tonight, and we've been working, I just want to add before Sean gets started, we've been working really good together the last couple of months, his department. It seems like, I don't know if he's hired more people, but we're really starting to see some movement in the Neighborhood Services area. And Captain, right? It's Captain nowadays, yeah. Captain Zach came tonight to maybe share some information with us because the transition, I think KPD stayed with Animal Control and Lieutenant Jim, who I work with frequently, and Kealan is going to be retiring. So after Sean's through with his report, I'd love to have Captain Zach come up and explain to us how that's working for you. Okay.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. So I, I haven't been too keen on what has been being reported to you guys. So I kind of put together some stuff just to make sure that we hit everything that we needed to. First off, I believe that a lot of what we're coming and reporting to you is some of the things that you guys have reported to us and where we're at as far as the status on those items. I realized that as I walked in here and put together this other, this other presentation for you. So I just want to let you know that so all, I don't know how many were on the list, but I have a list of four or five. Anyway, four, four or five complaints that were brought forward to us from the commission. Four, I know four of those five have been absolutely completed as of today with the help of the police department because we're still trying to navigate who and how we can make things happen, including the trailer that was parked downtown here. That was, that was removed as of the last time we checked this morning. So I think that we've got our, some of our communication issues taken care of. I've met with Kealan, I've met with Eddie. We're kind of all on the same page of what needs to be happening now, so as far as that goes. So please, if there's any, any issues with that, let us know. It's not on here, but I also wanted to add a little bit to what Mr. Tapia said about their voucher program. That's, that's something that Neighborhood Services, we're, we're very interested in being involved in. Part of, of what I'm looking to do, if we can ever get staffing in the whole department to where it needs to be. But I, I want to get this to where we have programs, right? So along with this program, from like, if it's the same area that you guys are going out in, you know, we, we want to be getting out there and saying, hey, you know what? We're going to be coming through here. The Clean Summit, Clean City Commission's going to be coming through here. They're going to be handing out vouchers to you if, if you're something. So we would like to collaborate with you guys on that. Definitely something we would love to do. So I think in the next coming months, we can, we can get some of that together. So I kind of wanted to just give you guys an overview of where we're at with the Neighborhood Services Division since Development Services has taken over since January. So kind of just some, some information. So in January of 2024, we, there was a transition of the Neighborhood Services Division, less anything animal control related, that was transferred over to Development Services. When that happened, in the transition, we lost one of the Neighborhood Services people, one of the, one of the officers, so we were only operating with one. Statistically, that's all I have statistics for right now is from January 1st. So from, we, we operated with one all the way until the beginning of April. So in that time, we had 138 cases that were opened and 95 of those cases were closed, meaning by, by voluntary compliance. If they, if they weren't closed out, right, the case doesn't get closed, right? We continue on and we go through the process of getting the attorney's office involved and getting it to the court and things like that. So in April, we had a second Neighborhood Services Officer that we were able to get hired in and started the training process. So six months to date till June 30th, which was, what, 17 or so days ago, we had opened 280 cases and we were able to close 182 of them, leaving us with roughly about 110 open cases right now. That number is larger because as of June 1st, we took over weed abatement for the city. So we, we did that just, just because there's a lot of confusion of where, where people would report things. And my view and our view was, hey, you know, let's simplify it. Let's just simplify it. We'll just take care of everything, right? So we did that since June 1st, right? We've taken on 45 new weed cases. So that's been a pretty huge, pretty huge increase in our caseload in the first place. And then as of last week, we were informed that. And then as of last week, we were informed that as of August 1st, we're going to be back down to one Neighborhood Services Officer. So we'll be trying to get somebody hired. Evelyn has taken a position with another department within the city. So that's good on her to improve herself and do what she needs to do. But that will be a huge loss for us for sure. But I have faith in, in what, where, where we need to be. So just wanted to kind of go over some of the complaints that we actually are handling now, just in case there was any confusion on your part. We're doing, you know, all public notices, which is trash, junk and debris, abandoned and junk vehicles, control of shopping carts, display of vehicles and articles for sale, yard sale signs, political and or general. The political signs is kind of a whole different ballgame because the, they're regardless of what the state statutes say and what our planning and zoning ordinance says. There is some pre court rulings that kind of tell us that we can't do some things. So and then we also do weed vegetation and hazardous complaints as far as that goes. And then not on the list that I just thought of is they are now also handling all planning and zoning complaints. So whether it's a shed that's too close to a property line, whatever, whatever it is, right? We're handling those, right? So we're looking for another increase and jump in our, in, in our caseload. So with that in mind, just know that we are not putting off the things that you guys are complaining about. It's just, we have a long list. So I know as of this afternoon, getting through emails, I was gone for the last week and a half for a family emergency thing. And I know just in, by going through emails, I, I've given at least 10 to 15 more cases as of this afternoon over to our essentially one Neighborhood Services Officer. So just, just know that we're going to get to it. It might take us longer than normal, but we will get to it. Also want to highlight some of the other larger cases and things that, that we've done just with some before and after photos. Obviously that's, you know, a lot of blight that's there before and after. This is kind of what, what it looks like as far as that goes. Here's another one of our cases. This is what it was before. And keep in mind, these are all voluntary compliance. These are all things that by going out, educating, talking to people, giving deadlines and things like that, they're taken care of on their own. So the, the JB's thing has been kind of a, kind of an issue all along because there was some ownership issues. Police Department was involved in, in a lot of this as well. They, they, they helped do a lot with trying to keep the transients and whatnot out of there. So we're, we're trying to do the best we can is collaborating and making sure that we're not stepping on each other's toes when we're doing these things. But overall, I think, I think we're doing well. And, you know, we're getting, we're getting things taken care of, so. Any other questions or comments or anything else you would like to be presented to you or information on anything next, at your next meeting?
I would just like to say, I've gone all the way back to April and you're 100% caught up on us, other than some weed abatement issues that just came through. And we do appreciate that. Thank you. I did get a response from your office with respect to, I think, two items that either KPD was already working on or you had, you turned it over to KPD. At that point, do we still work with you? Do we, do I email Captain Zach and say, hey, where are we at with these certain items?
I might, I think because, because some of it, and, and I would need to know the particular, the particulars of the item. And maybe that's something if, if somebody wouldn't mind getting an email over us that we can, we can do that. And that might be something that we collaborate with the police department on or if Captain Zach can, can provide further information on that too. I think, I think we need to, we need to try and, I think a lot of the issues that we've had in the past is there's been multiple people involved. So I think one of the successful portions of where we're at now and what we're doing is having a single line of communication and or one or two lines of communication. So I think we can get that worked out. And I think we'll, we'll talk amongst staff and kind of figure out what the best route is for that. And we will definitely let you, let you guys know.
Mr. Chairman. I, I did want to say thank you. I noticed one of the houses that I talked about on Louise has started cleaning up and it's looking about half, halfway there. So I'm very, very pleased because it was a, an eyesore, but it was more of a fire hazard than anything. But thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Sean? Thank you very much, Sean.
You betcha.
Evening Chair, Vice Chair, Commission Members. Briefly give, I'm Brian Zach. I am the captain of our operations for Kingman Police Department. And like has been mentioned, Neighborhood Services transitioned over under Sean through Development Services. Our NSOs are now ASOs, they're animal service officers. But we do work closely. So if there is complaints that come through to Sean that are more of a police issue and not his, he can send them over to us. He has. If it's something that takes immediate action, then we need to call dispatch. We need to get an officer over there immediately if that were to arise. Other than that, same thing. If we get a call and it's more of a code enforcement or Neighborhood Services, we then can route it that channel as well. So it's, it's at least tracked that way. And I imagine that's what's tallying up a lot of the cases for Sean's NSOs. But we do work together frequently and jointly on different complaints. They're limited as far as their scope and our scope is limited as well. But we work together if it involves both entities to resolve a situation, we can do that as well. I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions you may have.
I don't have any questions, but I've got a comment that it's good to see that two different departments are working together to, for one object and getting stuff done instead of passing it back and forth and getting nothing done. So it's good to hear.
It is good and, and it should be for our public to be welcome. No matter what the complaint is, if they come to me and I know it's Sean's crew, I'm not going to tell them, go to Sean. We'll take it and then ship it to Sean if we need to and vice versa. So we're not passing the complaint on and on and on, passing the line. You have to go to this depart, this department. So we try to house them the most we can and then direct them how we need to. But it is nice working with Sean and his, his team.
You know, we talk a lot about the transients and the, the loitering and the trash that they leave behind. And, and that's where Clean City Commission gets involved in that per se. Has anything changed with your department as far as loitering? You know, I, all I hear is, well, we can't really discuss loitering with them. You know, and I, a couple of years back, I had done the, the master trespassing sheet with everybody's signatures on it and everything. Are we making progress in that area, I guess is what I'm asking?
So I will say that, that depends. It's going to be up to the business and the property owners to say that it's a problem and they need help. They are encouraged to police their property and manage their business appropriately. So if it doesn't bother them, we're not going to bother with it. If they start calling because they've told them to leave and they keep coming back, then we have a solid ground to stand on. But until then, we encourage them to police their property and keep on it. They have representatives and I know, I'm familiar with those lists as well. Unfortunately, a lot of those property owners or managers change frequently and that's not up to date. So we rely on the business to call. Even if it's after hours and we find somebody on their property, we can move them along, but as far as prosecution and trespass, whatever, we'd have to actually call somebody each time to verify they are a legal representative. They do want prosecution. We do issue them a victim's rights form. So it's a whole process to get that. And not too many people answer their phones after hours for good reasons, I guess. But we are making strides on that. And I know there's recent change in Supreme Court cases for camping within the city. So we're waiting direction from Carl Cooper on that as far as what our legal requirements and limits are to enforce those violations as well. So we just encourage property owners, business owners, address it. If they cannot or if they're not getting voluntary compliance by keeping them away or they keep coming back, then we need to get involved and we'll help them for sure.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just wanted to say, it sounds like you guys, you have long lists and you're handling it pretty well. And just thank you very much. Appreciate it. Sounds like you guys are working really good together. So thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Item number C, Kealan's going to speak with respect to Sedona Recycle.
Good evening Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Commission. This was an item I believe Chairperson Hollins had brought to the commission at our last meeting. And I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize the fact that Donna did all the legwork on this. So for that, I appreciate all her help. The town of Sedona currently partners with a nonprofit program called Sedona Recycles to handle the area's recycling needs. This is a multi-stream drop-off program with three drop-off locations in the area, down from five with two of the locations being closed due to excessive dumping. The locations are open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Sedona Recycles is a nonprofit corporation that solicits donations, donations from the public, picks up recyclables from area businesses for a fee and receives fund from the town of Sedona to make up their approximately 600,000 per year or annual budget. Sedona Recycle, Recycles operates out of a small building and approximate half acre storage area or MRF Materials Recycling Facility. The open-sided building includes a small sorting system and baler. They store recyclable materials until they have enough to ship for recycling. Some materials are disposed of monthly, some yearly depending upon volume. The facility has six employees along with several part-time sorters and utilizes volunteers whenever possible. The facility accepts paper, cardboard, number one, plastic bottles, number five, plastic, mixed rigid plastic, number two and number five, steel aluminum, clear glass bottles and jars, colored glass bottles and jars and aluminum foil and pans. Sedona Recycles accepts small batteries at a charge of $3 per pound. They also recycle eyeglasses through a local service organization. The facility, facility also has an exchange program in which they collect egg cartons, bubble wrap, plastic packaging materials and give them to the public free of charge. Sedona Recycles deals with brokers who buy and sell recyclable items for, or excuse me, from all over the, the country. Most of their materials go to organizations based in Colorado with the remainder going to Phoenix. Sedona Recycles also focuses on education and has a part-time public information employee who writes educational articles for various publications. They also have a website, which is included in the, in the first paragraph of, of the memorandum that explains their mission and shares information about their operation. And they publish a newsletter. Sedona Recycles created their own customized system of storage for recyclable materials. Their sorting system separates steel from other debris with other items being handed, or excuse me, hand sorted. Even after using the mechanical sorting system, the items then have to be sorted again by hand to reduce cross-contamination. According to information found on the internet, new sorting systems cost anywhere from 80,000 to 220,000 and new balers run from 20,000 to 50,000. A large scale is also, or excuse me, a large scale is also needed to weigh bells because recyclables are sold based on poundage. A permanent storage area MRF is needed so that the items do not blow away. Paper and cardboards could stay dry and bells could be stored until there is enough to send to the recycler. Storage systems would have to be created to store materials until there is enough to bell. And then of course, collection systems would have to be created to allow those dropping off recycling a way to self-sort their items. And with that, I will do my best to answer any questions. And if, if I, if I don't know the answer to them, I might look for Donna's help or we can certainly get the information and I can respond back to you at a later date.
So I take it, it's a very expensive proposition to try, for the city of Kingman to put some type of right recycling program back, back into effect. And we did have that last year where the citizens voted to, to not bring back the recycling and stay with the lesser amount, so.
That's correct. And I believe that our finance department has also put together some more material. Of course, Wendy and Tina were here, I believe, at the last meeting. And I think that they'll be bringing that forward during an upcoming council meeting with the rate study.
Mr. Chairman. So Donna and I and some members that are no longer on the board actually went to Sedona to see the recycling facility over there. And I had been over there twice myself prior to that. It's actually pretty well-run and small. It doesn't take up a lot of space. They're always easier if you have more space, but they make do with what they have pretty well. And they change what they're taking depending on the market. So they, they kind of stay up with that. When I first got here, oh, we're doing recycling. So Golden Valley have no recycling and they got to drive all the way in and all that stuff. So I go out and find an eight compartment recycle trailer over in Perrump. I go buy that and haul it to the house. And then I find out, oh, we're doing recycling, but it's costing enough money. So I never used it because I don't want to cost money by doing the recycling. Doesn't, didn't, didn't fit my purpose. So I still have that trailer. My wife wants to get rid of it, but I still have it. Also ADQ, this has been the first year in about 10 years that they've had money for grants to buy equipment and do recycling and stuff like that. It's nowhere near what's needed, but they finally did get some money. And of course, us not having a recycling system and, and going to do one, that I don't know if there's any money left for that. I know I've went to, we went to Albuquerque one day and JB Shaw, who works at the, he's the recycling coordinator for ADQ. And they're, they're working on a hub and cycle thing where like we would do the, the main part here to gather the stuff. And we would say have outlying areas at the, the communities and stuff like that. They would gather, bring it back to the hub to process it and mail it and store it and, and what have you. And prior, as I said before, the problem was with storing the stuff because you need to protect it because if you got it sitting out in the sun, it deteriorates, especially the plastic and, and the cardboard. And then it's pretty much useless after that. So you do have to have a place to store it. And the equipment can be expensive. This is, I think that's a low estimate on some of that stuff, but you can, all that stuff that's commercial is obviously they charge a lot of money for it. So it does take some investment. But if you watch what you're taking and when you're taking it and if you take it, I think it can be a good program. Reduce the land, stuff going to the landfill, which obviously linkens the use of the landfill for a longer period of time. And we're not burying stuff that's actually a resource that we can make money from. But we have to come up with a system and a place and. But we have to come up with a system and a place and, and the workers. I would personally would like to see it come back, but with the intention that we're going to at least break even. Because it doesn't do anybody any good to cost us money. That's not the intent of, of doing that, so. Good information, for sure. Also, EPA has a lot of information on recycling and some promotional flyers and stuff that you can download, videos and all that stuff. So there's a lot of information out there to, to give to the people to, so they know how to do the recycling and stuff like that. So I would like to feel.
If I may, for some of the new Commission members, I'd like to give a little bit of background. So back in 2008, Donna and I worked diligently on getting an ADQ grant. We were awarded an ADQ grant in 2008, and we bought four recycling trailers. Those recycling trailers were distributed to three of our city parks. We had one as a backup, so we would take that one, go drop it off, bring this one back. We would manually sort it, make sure people did it diligently. We'd sort for contamination. So we went from there, and we grew to about 10, 11 other drop sites. And instead of having the recycling trailers, we actually had three-yard containers. So we had those at the drop locations. It wasn't but a couple of years after that. Again, the key word with recycling is contamination. You know, they were, those three-yard dumpsters were out there, left 24/7. People were out there using it for just regular trash cans. We all know the outlying areas, there's no mandated trash service out there, so it wasn't doing us any good. So we took that opportunity. We closed down all of the drop locations, and we brought it to our Public Works Department, and that was very effective. We were able to take contamination rate that was in the high 40s, and we reduced it down to less than 10%. All of those recyclables there, we would transport either here locally or we would transport them to Las Vegas. So while I got that, I had just have a couple more bullet points regarding recycling at Sedona. Because Glenn, myself, our director, Rob Owen, and Donna, we just recently went there roughly a week and a half ago, a week ago. Okay, so I know that, they talked about a $600,000 budget, but what, they received $250,000 from the city of Sedona. Now, it's a nonprofit, but again, they, you know, I know the key word is, so we can break even. Well, it's not a break-even point, because City Sedona is subsidizing it. So they're still, if they didn't have that $250,000, they would still be, what is the term, in the red? So, so they, they wouldn't do it. I believe when we stopped our program, it was just a little over $300,000. We stopped our program because COVID came about. We had inmates that worked for us. They pulled the inmates, and it just worked out that we stopped it. And then since then, there was a rate study that was in effect. Like Mr. Oberg mentioned, there was a survey that went out. We gave our ratepayers, everybody that's in the city limits who has to pay for trailers, we gave them four or five different choices of what they would like. And they opted out of the recycling program because of, again, most everybody's being hit in the back pocket, and it just meant a couple more dollars on the bill, and they chose not to. So I know it was discussed earlier, we're going through, we're in year number four, every five years we'll do a rate study. They're currently doing that, and I do believe there's going to be some information that's going to be brought back in September. In that, we will try to get direction from council to see whether or not for 2026, we need to include some budget monies for recycling. So again, we're in that process, so. But again, I, again, I just wanted to say, we two met with ADQ prior, a week prior to going, maybe two weeks prior to going to Sedona. And what we heard from them is time and time again, in the, it's the old way of thinking that recycling, you will make money. That is no more. In order to recycle, there is going to be a fee associated with that. And unfortunately, that fee is going to be imposed on our ratepayers. So we're an enterprise fund, we don't get any monies from the general fund. So solid waste money is basically coming from what each individual ratepayer pays. So it'll go back to them, it'll, you know, they will be able to make that decision. You know, I know there was rumors that Public Works stopped the recycling, that, you know, council stopped it. No, it was, we left it up to the ratepayers, and they, in return, had a vote. So I would encourage, you know, keep up, up on that target. So the difference between their program and our program is Wayne talked about a hub-and-spoke thing. So some of the smaller communities that aren't as close to a MRF, a MRF is a material recovery facility that just basically takes recyclables. There's some MRFs that are just recyclables only, and then there's some that, you know, will take trash, and then they will sort it from the trash. But we were very blessed to take it to Las Vegas, to Republic Services, and they, in return, everything that we took, again, we got less than a 10% contamination rate. We took it to them. So yes, there was a tipping fee for us to drop it there. It was cheaper as a tipping fee compared to taking it to the landfill, but there was also other costs associated with, again, labor. One of the things I wanted to point out here with Sedona, Doug was a very fascinating guy. He gave us a very good presentation, but 35% of their workforce money spent is on contamination. Because again, they too have a 24-hour, they have it out in front of their building. Nobody mans it, it's there, so every morning they would have to come out and clean that up. We recently drove all the way to Pine Top. We went to look at their recycling center down there, too. And even, theirs is not open 24/7, but again, there's a big contamination rate there. One of the main things that we noticed with Sedona as well is they sort it twice. So it'll go through the sorting station twice to make sure they get, they get a 98% recovery rate. So again, so what I wanted to emphasize, we had a drop program that we sorted everything, we bid it, and then we hauled it. Kind of the same way the other hub-and-spoke places work. The difference is, we don't, we didn't have a baler, we didn't have a sorter. And we chose to stay out of that, because if we did that, then we had to buy larger equipment. You know, Sedona just purchased their new, it's not new, it was in 2017. They paid $250,000 for this baler, if I remember right. So that's what that cost. Most recently, because I know this is where we're headed, you know, I spoke with JB, who is ADQ recycling coordinator, and I asked him, hey, give me some prices on what some of the most recent MRFs, large and small, what they run. Phoenix just built a new MRF, it was $25 million. He thinks we could probably be in a, a good ballpark between anywhere from $500,000 to $1 million. We could get something similar to what Sedona has. So again, keep in mind, that's going to have to be passed on to the ratepayer, so. But again, we too thought they have a great program, they do really well. You know, as far as storage goes, their cardboard, they take full trucks only. So cardboard, they will stock for two months before they have enough to have a 53-foot trailer to be hauled. They're shipping that over to Colorado, freight is included in what they get paid. So even with all the revenue that they get from the commodities that they're sending, still doesn't offset, they still run in the negative. So again, I think we just got to get back to, we need to educate our people, to our residents, that, you know, it's not like taking aluminum cans where you're going to get paid every day because it's offset with all the other costs that are associated. The thing that was surprising is they pretty much have to hold on to all of the plastic that they take. They take milk jugs and water bottles. It takes them a whole year to get a whole truckload. So you can imagine, because those bales, when they bail, they don't weigh nothing. You know, plastic doesn't weigh anything. So again, it was a lot of great information. Again, they did too have some, they were able to get some grants and stuff like that. We've seen those grant applications come through, but when we were, we knew in our budget we couldn't do anything for five years, we didn't put out for that because, you know, we're at the council direction, so. But again, some great information there. It, they average about seven tons daily is what they do in collection. And I think other than that, your packet summarized the rest of it. They, it was a great program, we really enjoyed it. But again, I think right around the curve, we're going to be looking at some advice, some recommendations, and what would you like our solid waste? When do we, what do we want to bring back? But, so, anyway, that's, just thought I'd add to that.
Thank you, Eddie.
I had additional, not questions or anything, but information. The, the, the key to the whole recycling thing is the contamination, because you can have one item go in there and they go with the whole truckload, it becomes trash. And it's hard to do because people don't always do the right thing just because it's the right thing to do. They do things that are convenient, which end up costing money that could have been going towards the, the program. And it's very hard to do, and I think when we went to the one location, that was a great asset by doing that to get good, valuable product. And I know they do come down, if you got a load of cardboard, they will send a truck down. They got a broker that does all that stuff and coordinates everything, so they, they will come. Also, if you go online to recycland-refcycling.com, you can sign up and get, they got some magazines they put out on recycling, and it kind of keeps you up to date on what's happening throughout the United States and even Canada and stuff like that, of programs being started, stopped. And it's kind of amazing, because they'll stop one program here and start another, the exact same program on, in another town and stuff like that. So it all has to do with the region that you're in, what, what stuff will sell because you get a different price in different regions and stuff. It's just like the scrap metal stuff here, so. But they do give you, it's, it's a little outdated, because it takes time to do the magazine, but they, they give you a rundown on the back, on the market analysis. And like I say, it takes a long time to get a bunch of milk jugs. The milk jugs have been over a dollar a pound at one time, and now it's not quite that good. But it, it's really fluctuates, and you got to stay on top of it to do. So we also need to, within that, by extending the life of the landfill, because we're not sending the stuff out there that shouldn't be going out there, or doesn't need to be going out there. That's, that's money, but it's not necessarily money we're going to stick in our pockets right away. It's, you know, instead of 25 years, pull that stuff out, we might get 30 years out of it. And it costs a lot of money to close the landfill, so that can save us money in the long run by not having that stuff going. So it's kind of a non-monetary benefit for us, since we don't own the landfill.
Exactly. I spoke with the county this week, and they indicated that they have between five and eight years left in the current cell that they have. And then they'll bring it back soon to be able to see about purchasing more land to open up another cell, so. But the bottom line on whole recycling is to try to divert it from going to the landfill there. So like Wayne indicated earlier, it's just going to be education. So maybe my suggestion is, maybe there could be, maybe we don't have the monies for a lot of this stuff, but it doesn't cost a whole lot to educate. So maybe when we're doing First Fridays, you know, there could be some education pamphlets on there, trying to tell people how to recycle. And it's just not about, you know, reduce, reuse, recycle. You know, I mean, you know, we all know when you go in and buy bulk stuff. I mean, there's a whole avenue of education. Won't go into today because I know we're running late, but again, those are just some other thoughts.
Thank you, Eddie. Wayne?
The, and like I said, the ADQ, I was watching some of JB's videos and stuff that he did, it was pretty comical, but it's to the point on, on stuff like that. I, I also talked to the, to Tim out at landfill. And they take in scrap metal and refrigerators and air-conditioned units and stuff like that. But they, they lost their guy who would go in there and, and take the refrigerant out so they could recycle the stuff. So they, if they don't find somebody to do that, they may stop taking that type of material in at all. And then they also had, from just a few months, they had like 400 bicycles out there that, if I knew anybody that would take them and recycle them instead of them having to send them to the scrapyard. I haven't found anybody for that yet either, but it's amazing how many bicycles go to the landfill. And I can't figure out why any metal would go to the landfill since it's easy to take it to the, they probably drove right by the scrap metal yard and, and took it out to the dump to pay for it when they could have got money. So that's another educational thing I think we need to work on, getting those people to quit doing that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to item number six, announcements, announcements by Commission members. Any announcements? And then.
They have.
It says, go ahead.
They have the Rural Policy Forum over in, it's in Cottonwood this year. August 6th, 7th, 8th, somewhere around there. We'll be going over to that, to attend that, and this will be our third year for that. But it's kind of good information of different programs throughout the, all the nonprofits in the cities and the, and the state, all giving out the information and what programs are out there. It's pretty, pretty educational.
What's the name of it?
The Rural Policy Forum.
Thank you, Wayne. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman. Because we bring out so much information to our First Fridays, we will continue to do First Fridays. We just won't discuss any business amongst ourselves when we're handing out information to the public on our Clean Cities Commissions.
Thank you.
I have an announcement. It's good news, and I hope Kingman Store follows suit Kroger to eliminate plastic bags by 2025. And I hope, I hope that, and also Walmart's supposed to go back to, well, I don't know if all the Walmarts are going to, but they're going to get rid of self-checkout. And that'll help with the plastic bag issue, because I believe the, a big problem with these plastic bags that end up on airway against that fence and in that field are from Klingons. The bags that, when people self-bag, there's always a bag that cling on. They take it out to the parking lot, and then it's across the street, you know. So anyway, there's a, too good, hopefully, will help us with the, with the plastic bag issue. Thank you.
Thank you. One part of item number six, request for agenda items for future meetings. Can I move that into number seven and have a discussion on it? Number seven, requests for future agenda items and updates. As you all know, Kealan, myself, Donna, Eddie, we have an agenda meeting usually two weeks prior to our meeting here in chambers. So if anyone has an agenda item that they'd like to put on the next meeting, please email it in to Donna or Kealan, and let us know, and we can discuss it and move forward with it.
Yeah, and Chairman, Vice Chair members of the Commission, if I can just underscore what Chairman Oberg said, maybe I could perhaps do a better job, too, of sending out a reminder when we get closer to that time to the Commission members as well.
Okay, number eight, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I will make that motion. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.